Welcome to the February 4, 2013 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Pastor Darrell Bentley from the Troy Seventh Day Adventist Church with us this evening to lead us in the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance after the invocation, Pastor.
Mr. Mayor, it's an honor to be here with you guys this evening. Thank you, Cheryl, for the invitation to come and share the invocation. And so I just ask you, if you would, bow your heads with me as we invite God's presence. Kind Father, we thank you so much for the gift of life, for the gift of talents, and, Lord, that we could use those in service to others. Tonight, Father, as we open this council meeting, we come with our understanding, we come with an agenda, but, Father, we need your understanding. We need to be on your agenda. Lord, I'm reminded of Jesus' words where He was told by the Pharisees trying to trick Him, "Should we pay tax?" Wisely, Jesus answered them and said, "Render unto Caesar the things that are Caesar's and unto God the things that are God's." So tonight, Father, we desire to advance this government of the city of Troy, but to do so within the boundaries of godly principles. So, Lord, tonight, I ask that you would lead our mayor, this council, and all who will be a part of these proceedings. We ask that you might be glorified in the decisions that would be made. And so, Lord, we thank you. Please use this council tonight to further your mission for the city of Troy. If we pray these things in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for those words. Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
Councilmember Teetz?
Here.
All present. Our first order of business this evening is certificates of recognition and special presentations. And our first presentation is by the Troy School District students on the annual Red Ribbon Week campaign, presenting "The Best Me Is Drug-Free," pledges forms to the city Come on up, kids. The microphone is yours, and welcome.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Teresa, and I'm going to tell you a little bit about Red Ribbon Week. First of all, it's all about saying no to drugs. Now I'm going to tell you about the history of Red Ribbon Week. Kiki Camarena grew up in a dirt-floored house. He worked his way through college. He served in the Marines. He became a police officer and joined the United States Drug Enforcement Administration, also known as the DEA. They sent him to Mexico to investigate a major drug ring. On February 7, 1985, he was captured by the drug lords. Sadly, he was tortured to death. Now Jason will tell you the rest of the story.
Hi, my name is Jason, and as Teresa said, I will tell you the rest of the story. Friends and neighbors began wearing red ribbons to remember Kiki and his hard work. The first red ribbon celebration was in the fall of 1988 in Kiki's memory. Now every October, many schools and communities in the United States take a stand against drugs. They wear red ribbons, sign their names to a pledge form, and sing songs about being drug, being drug-free. Now you know the history about the Red Ribbon Week. We thank you for supporting us in a drug-free community. Oh, one more thing, we'd like to share a song with you called "Red Ribbon Day."
Thank you, Jason and Teresa. The song is called "Red Ribbon Day," and it's one of six songs that all the elementary schools have, and they sing every year at that time, and the kids are going to sing, and it's so easy. We're hoping you will join us, too. And we just want to let you know that the children here are representing four of the, I believe, sixteen schools, elementary and middle schools. There's students here from Costello and Barnard and Bemis and Larson and Leonard. So this is called "Red Ribbon Day."
(music playing) Let's have a red ribbon day. Let's have a red ribbon day. Let's have a life-giving, healthy living red ribbon day. Let's show our red ribbon pride. Let's show our red ribbon pride. Let's show our life-giving, healthy living red ribbon pride. Let's be a red ribbon team. Let's be a red ribbon team. Let's be a life-giving, healthy living red ribbon team.
Besides thanking all of you and the children, I want to give a special thanks to Melisse Malvin, who is our president of Troy Families for Safe Homes, and to Mindy Withan, who has just been my right-arm girl for the red ribbon chair. And I will let Melisse Malvin take the floor.
Thank you so much. Really, the thanks has to go to Alicia. She's taken over the red ribbon and done just a fantastic job the past couple of years. I just wanted to come and thank you. I love the Troy community, as I know a lot of you know, and I feel it's very important that the schools and the community and all the different organizations stay together. In the elementary level, the kids, they do crazy things. They sock it to drugs, and they get to do different things every day, and they sing the songs. In the middle school, the kids come up and sign a pledge that says that they will be drug-free, and they get a piece of licorice. So we try to have fun with it, and so far, everyone's having a great time. But we would also like to bring our pledges that have come from the elementary schools and the middle schools and give them to you, our city council, and as part of our community efforts. So, boys and girls, if you'd like to take them up?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this one from Leonard? And Leonard really outdid themselves this year. This is how they signed their pledges. Isn't that fantastic?
Nice.
So they did a very nice job.
Jason, for the American flag, this is a political year, so Leonard's theme this year is running across America, and everything has to do with the red, white, and blue theme. And we are all so proud to be drug-free Americans, and that's why our children made this flag and signed it for you.
So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Can you take that?
That's what it's all about, isn't it? Our next order of business is a tough act to follow that, but it's an honor to present a proclamation of recognition to Michelle Hodges for her service as Troy Chamber of Commerce Director. And I'm going to move down to the podium, and then, Michelle, you would meet me there. I'd be honored to present this to you.
Thanks to see you, too.
This is really an honor for me, because I think you and I became friends in the past few years, and I couldn't think of a better proclamation to read than this proclamation of recognition to you. So, whereas Michelle Hodges joined the Troy Chamber as its president in April of 2001, the Troy Chamber is a dynamic organization comprised of nearly 700 of Troy area's top companies. And whereas the Troy Chamber, established in 1959, has a 19-member board of directors, five-member staff team, and a $500,000 annual budget, it oversees 11 committees, is responsible for more than 100 events per year. And whereas the Chamber's objectives are heavily oriented toward economic development, entrepreneurship, globalization, and leadership, most recently, Michelle worked tirelessly to advance the Troy Transit Center. And whereas prior to joining the Troy Chamber, Michelle held a variety of positions with the Detroit Regional Chamber, DRC, including Director of Technology, Senior Director of New Investment, and Director of National Investment. And whereas a graduate of Michigan State University, go green, Michelle holds a Bachelor of Science degree in social science with an emphasis in urban planning. Michelle is recently graduate of the Michigan Political Leadership Program and the Institute of Organization Management, serving as class president for each. And whereas for four years, Michelle served as president of the Oakland Chamber Network, a regional collaborative of nearly 30 chambers in the county. In 2011, she was recognized as the Businesswoman of the Year by the Troy Rotary, and she is a member of the 2007 Cranes Detroit Business 40 Under 40 Class. And whereas Michelle is leaving the Troy Chamber to lead the Belle Isle Conservancy, a group that focuses on historic preservation, restoration, and preservation of the national environment, planning/funding improvements, recreational activities, and marketing strategies for the park. And whereas, one of the most important aspects in Michelle's life is her family, her husband Matthew and daughters Sylvia and Josephine. And now therefore be it resolved that the Troy City Council extends special recognition to Michelle Hodges for her dedication and commitment to Troy's business community. And be it further resolved that the Troy City Council and all of the Troy's residents congratulate Michelle Hodges for being such a tireless and enthusiastic partner with the city of Troy and our local businesses, and wish her continued success in all future endeavors. And it is presented this fourth day of February 2013, and is signed by me and all members of council. Congratulations, and thank you so much for all the congratulations.
This is something so special that I will keep forever, won't go in the dead file. I'm going to put it where I can remember it, but they say time flies when you're having fun, and if that's the case, these 11 years have flown by, so it's been a blast. In fact, my first council meeting 11 years ago, I ran into a door on the way here, and I was disfigured. I was very glad that I didn't repeat that today on my last meeting with you all. But we've been through a lot together, and when you go through a lot with people, you get close to them. And I've just been so impressed with the compassion, the passion, the commitment, the intellect that you all serve, that the people of Troy serve and give to their community. So you should be very, very proud of what you have here, and it certainly was an honor to be here, and I hope you'll still have me going forward. So thank you very much.
We have no carryover items. No public hearings are scheduled this evening. So our next order of business is public comment for items on the agenda, and I don't see that anybody has signed up for that. So our next order of business is postponed items. We have no postponed items. So we will move directly to regular business. And the first order of business is I-1A. So I will move the resolution that the mayor of the city of Troy hereby appoints the following nominated person to serve on the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term that expires 9/30/2016, and that is Dennis Bostic.
Support.
Moved by the chair and supported by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming that we appoint Dennis Bostic to the DEA for the four-year term to expire 9/30/2016. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations to Mr. Bostic, and welcome to a tough decision-making process in the future. I'm going to turn the chair over to Mayor Pro Tem Fleming for the following appointments.
Yes, Resolution I-1B, resolve that Troy City Council hereby appoints the following nominated persons to serve on the Traffic Committee. Those persons are Sarah Binkowski for a term expiring January 31, 2016, and Stephen Popovic for a term expiring January 31, 2016.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming and supported by Councilmember Campbell that we appoint the indicated names by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. Congratulations. Next item of business is to appoint the position that has been vacated by Michelle Hodges, and I am going to delay that at this point until there is a replacement. So I will turn the chair back over to Mayor Pro Tem Fleming.
Yeah, this is a nomination to the Historic District Commission Agenda Item I-2B, resolve that Troy City Council hereby nominates Kent Voight to serve on the Historic District Commission for a term expiring March 1, 2016. And this is a nomination we'll deal with at the next regular city council meeting if this is approved.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming and supported by Councilmember McGinnis that we nominate Kent Voight for the position of Historic District Commissioner, Commissioner, on the Commission for the term to expire 3/1/16. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
There is not a closed session request this evening, so we will move to the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to pull an item on the consent agenda? Seeing none, would somebody like to move the resolution to approve all items on the agenda?
Mayor?
Counsel?
Resolve that Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember McGinnis and supported by Councilmember Campbell that we approve all items on the consent agenda. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
All items passed. If there's anybody here on any consent items, they all have been approved. Next item of business are memorandums and future council agenda items. I see there are two public announcements for public hearings that are listed. Is there any discussion on those items? I notice we will be having liquor hearings, liquor violation hearings on February 20. See Attorney Bloom?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes, we did have two nights reserved, but with your last action, the approval of the consent agenda, you canceled the one on 6th. Unfortunately, there were only 12, so we can consolidate them in one night, and you have the 20th. That's already been set as that date.
Thank you. Next item of business is public comment for items not on the agenda. Our first speaker and only speaker is resident Richard Peters. Good evening.
Hi. I'm just going to change it up tonight. I want to talk a little bit about global warming and hydrogen, actually, and not only hydrogen, but methane. The atmosphere...
Could you move the microphone over?
Okay. Yeah, this is Roy McAlister. He's the head of the National Hydrogen Association. He wrote this. But he says, "Stratospheric ozone that protects life at the Earth's surface from radiating damage and cancer due to high-energy ultraviolet rays is being destroyed by chlorine and other halogens that have been delivered to the upper atmosphere by hydrogenated chemicals. We can remove stratospheric halogens and restore natural conditions. Hydrogen and oxygen will be made by electrolysis of seawater, large guns, naval gun, utilized hydrogen-oxygen propellants. Hydrogen-oxygen powered rockets will launch payloads of sodium and/or sodium hydroxide into the stratosphere. Atomized sodium ordering the world in the upper atmosphere will rack with halogens such as chlorine to form harmless salts and precipitate into the oceans." Okay, that is a possible solution for our ozone. Also, if needed to be, I think personally that we could use snow throwers on some of our glaciers, and maybe if it's practical, maybe on the north shore of the Great Lakes. That, in my mind, would maybe retard some of the current melting that's going on, and it might save our rivers if, you know, if you believe like I do that that's the main cause of our fresh water. I personally don't think that desalination will work, because if people look at the Dead Sea right now, it's going dead. They're losing it more and more all the time. I mean, even though we have abundance, I'm not really a big fan of that sort of thing. Also, let's see, I think that may just about be it. Yeah, I guess that's about it. So, oh, also, I would also use hydrogen and methane. We have 6 billion excretions every day on this planet. Now, that makes sense. I think that we should learn to harness that kind of gas, I use the term gas, in order to, you know, keep our, it's an energy that we should use. I think Bill Gates is starting to go in that direction, but I would hope that governments take a fresh approach to that, and also hydrogen, because it is the most abundant element in, you know. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes the speakers that have signed up this evening. The next order of business are council referrals. There are none this evening, so that moves us to council comments. Are there any council members that wish to comment this evening? Next item of business is reports. Are there any members of council that wish to speak on any of the reports that were supplied This is a quick one. Our next order of business is a study item, and we will be in recess for five minutes and reconvene in the boardroom to listen to a study presentation by the Troy Police Department and the Troy Working Together program. So we are in recess. For the study item, and I will turn the program over to City Manager Kishnik.
Thank you, Mayor, and City Council, and members of the public. Tonight is the night we actually kick off the presentations, and I like the way you said it. We'll start with the Troy Police Department through the Troy Working Together Program, because that's really what it's all about. You said that very well at the end of the meeting, and I don't know if anyone caught it, but I did. And I want you to know, I really am encouraged that we all sit around the table and have an opportunity to go over each department on a cursory review, and then we get into the budget, so we have a folder. And many of you have been through the budget years before, but this helps remind you what's going on, and it allows the department to put out their, what's happened. So, what I ask each department to do, and the Police Department will kick it off tonight, is to review their, what is it that they're in business to do? To look at their staffing history, to look at the revenues and expenditures on a macro view for their department, to also look at some of the things that they've done to cut costs, to improve efficiencies operationally, to make it a more efficient operation, and I think you'll be impressed with this Police Department, as well as what pressures do they have that are affecting them as they've gone the last four years and going forward. And then, sort of, what are some of the recommendations? And then, we can maybe have a brief discussion at the end about, you know, some conclusions, and is there some consensus as we move forward going through the Police Department during the budget process? So, with that, I will turn it over to Chief Mayor, who's done a great job and put a great team together for this presentation.
Thank you. I'd like to start with the last point that Mr. Kishnik manages, a team. This is a team effort. I've worked with Captain Fry, Captain Redmond, Lieutenant Stout, and Lieutenant Gordon. I'm putting this, as well as some other staff that's not here tonight. This isn't a one-person show. It's a team effort, and I can't emphasize that enough. This is based on the format that Mr. Kishnik gave. It's kind of a boilerplate, is what we should be following. I'm going to follow that. If there's any questions that come up as we go through the slides while we indicate, and then we'll also take questions at the end, and Mr. Kishnik has some topic points that we can touch on. So, that, Mr. Mayor, I'll start?
Thank you.
This is our mission statement. It's been our mission statement for quite a while. Our mission is to enhance the quality of life in our community by protecting life and property and maintaining the peace through police service. I'll start out with showing our staffing levels. The staffing of Police Department people typically think of staffing from two points, from our sworn personnel and our non-sworn personnel. I think everybody knows that sworn personnel are police officers that have arrest powers. So, that includes the first, the lowest level, lowest seniority police officer, all the way up to the chief of police. That's sworn personnel. It's a different level of training, different level of the ability to make arrests, and they're sworn personnel. Non-sworn personnel, I'll get into next, and I'll explain a little bit more in depth what non-sworn personnel are. You see, from our 10-11 budget to current, we've maintained the chief position. We've reduced the number of captains from three to two. We've reduced the number of lieutenants from seven to five. At the high point in the Troy Police Department, we had 11 lieutenants. We've reduced the number of sergeants from 18 to 15. The high point for sergeants in Troy Police Department was 23. And we reduced the number of police officers from 94 to 74. The high point for police officers was 100 police officers we had at one time. So, from the 10-11 budget to the current budget, we've reduced from 123 to 97. I've got another slide later on while I go through a little bit more history of the Police Department's staffing levels, but this is following the criteria of what we're doing now from 10-11 to current budget year. Non-sworn personnel, for our purposes, we consider non-sworn personnel to be uniformed civilians. So, we have uniformed civilians as communication supervisors, lockup personnel that work at jail, communications personnel that work in communications, and some other positions around the Police Department, such as our property officer, an officer that works... And we're going to put one into our community services section. So, I'm in filled position right now. We have an officer that handles a lot of the details regarding our vehicle maintenance, and that's a uniformed civilian position. We also have civilian positions, which are in your administrative-type positions, our IT. We've got two IT people within. We have Jeff Wilbersky who handles all of our liquor licensing and all of our licensing, and then we've got some clerical staff and records clerks. So, those are non-uniformed civilians. Yes, sir?
Would it be safe to say that the Troy Police Department has been a leader in putting civilians in many of these positions that aren't in other departments that use sworn personnel to man the lockup facilities and dispatching and other variety of things that...
Yes, it would be absolutely safe to say that, and it's... The previous meeting started at 6 o'clock. There was discussion about the EVIP and some of the issues that we were doing things well ahead of what other agencies and what other cities were doing. That's a good example of that. We, during the course that I've worked here, we've had civilians in positions that are traditionally staffed by law enforcement, by sworn officers, which cost more. There's a higher level of training for a sworn police officer, and there's a higher cost that goes along with being a sworn police officer. Police service aides, by putting them in there, we save on the wages, and we also save on the time that they're available, because they're not taking all the extensive training that a police officer gets. So, we've been doing that for years. Another example of that is our licensing civilian position. During the time that I've been at Troy PD, there's been a captain that was in charge of liquor licensing, then it went to a lieutenant who was in charge of liquor licensing, then we reduce it down to a sergeant in charge of liquor licensing. It was a police officer who did it, and then recently, I assigned, was fortunate enough to get a civilian who worked for the city, who understood a lot of how to deal with the spreadsheets and all those details, and we put him in liquor licensing. So, he's handled that. So, it's a non-sworn position now, because we want sworn positions where we can use those sworn powers. Does that answer the question?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Chief, does the animal control officers, is that outsourced, or is that something that the service aides do?
The animal control officers are now, we've outsourced that, and Open County handles that. And what it is, is they get, they're funding through all the dog licenses, so they're funded through that. We, as a service, our citizens, our residents, we still provide dog licensing, so they can come in and do their dog licensing through the county here at Troy. But we, through attrition, have eliminated those positions. That's a good question. Any else on this one? Again, this is an overview. These are things that took years to get to, and they tend to just... This is what I was referring to, which gives you a good overall view of what's happened to staffing. I started in 1979. In 1979, the city of Troy was not the city it is today. When you think of Long Lake and Liverneys, I use that as an example, that was a red flasher for Long Lake, and Liverneys was a yellow flasher at night. It was two lanes in both directions. We all know what it's like now. You've got boulevards, you've got major roadways there. It's all built up. That's just one example. When you look at the Somerset Collection, everything north of Big Beaver, when I started in 79, was a large field, that the only thing that happened there was in, around Christmas time, they sold Christmas trees there. Other than that, we were chasing kids around on dirt bikes. We're always back there riding around. You see what the Somerset Collection has become. There wasn't all the commercial establishments that we have in the south in the town, and Big Beaver was nothing like it is right now. So, the city has changed appreciably since when I started in 1979. Our population also went up, and our calls for service went up. As all those calls for service and the need for additional personnel were needed, we increased our number of police officers, and we increased our number of civilian personnel. So, we didn't just increase for the sake of increasing, we had workload that we had to match. So, we matched our workload with our staffing levels. We started realizing, in 2004, 2005, the City Manager's Office gave us a heads-up, "You better start watching it. There's, things aren't looking real good." We started watching what we were doing with replacing personnel, so we started downsizing. When the big hit happened, we were in a better position, because we already had, tritted some positions, and were able to, through attrition, get down to 97 positions. Now, some of you may recall, originally, we were going to drop to 93 positions, but through the study that we had through ICMA, in order to be sustainable and handle the workload that we had, they put in four more positions, which put us up to 97 sworn. You see, we did the same thing when it came to number of civilian personnel. We started ramping up, probably about 1980-ish is when we added our lockup section. We moved into the new building. That's when we hired a lot of PSAs to work in the lockup, rather than hiring police officers. As previously mentioned, other cities have police officers that work their lockup, costs a lot more money, and we have police service aides on there. So, that's about the time period that we started ramping up and starting our own lockup and running that with civilians. You see, we hit our high of 58 civilians, and now we're down to 48. So, overall, this shows the decrease in personnel. Many of you have seen this slide before. Just want to throw it in there, because I think it illustrates very well. We have to give an overview of our revenue. Of course, as in all good plans, when we tried this, it was actually all in one line, so you can see this is 11, 12, actual, 12, 13 estimate, and 13, 14 forecast for our revenue. What we did here, the intent isn't to bore you with the minutia. The intent here is to give you broad overviews of some of the areas where we have revenue. We have, in what's called grants, is we get grant money that comes to us in the forms of funding for ballistic vests. You have to make sure that you're rotating your stack of ballistic vests, that the officers wear to keep them timely. We get 50% of that back from the federal government, but we have to put it in our budget to expend. 302 funds is training funds that comes in and goes towards assisting us with training. 9/11 training is specifically money that's used for communications training that comes in, and that's funded through a fee on landlines and cellphones, so that money comes back to the Police Departments to assist us with our training. And we get funding from the state for liquor licensing. So, that's for doing liquor licensing checks and checking establishments, which we do a very good job on, because it seems to be a community standard to track those. We charge for services. This is an area we've started taking off in. We, as you're all aware, we have a contractual agreement with the city of Claussen to provide lockup and communication services. We also used to provide animal control services, but when we stopped doing that, we couldn't provide them that service, because we didn't have anybody for it. We make approximately $200,000 a year on that. Through towing services and abandoned vehicles, we get those services, we get money back for that. We get grants from the Traffic Improvement Association. What they do is they reimburse us for the time that we spend on details such as drunk driving details, going out for seatbelt enforcement, and that. So, they reimburse us for our costs on that. We also charge many of our shopping establishments and venues for Christmas details to provide policing services to them. So, for example, some of that collection from the Oak Mall, pretty much from Thanksgiving until after Christmas, we have officers that are working there extra, and they pay us for that service. Some of the other companies are starting to request police service, too. In the past, we probably, we would have just gone over and helped them out during their peaks, but now we're charging for those services, too. Target Corporation, Walmart, and one of the churches, we provide policing services for them to get reimbursed for. Fines and forfeitures, we get money back from, through the court, for our drunk driving arrests. We get reimbursed for a lot of our time, and the forfeiture aspect of forfeiting the vehicles from drunk drivers, we do that. We don't get a lot on that, but we have that included in here. We get revenue from false alarms, from responding to false alarms, comes back in the city, and from licensing of alarms. There's other fines and forfeitures in there also. And another that's been topical in the past is lockup telephones. All of our cells have phones in them that are basically, and I'll explain it quite simply, are, they're in the wall, and people can use them when they're in our jail to make phone calls. It stops us from being able to take people in and out of the cells, and we get a portion of those calls back that come back to the city's revenue. So, you can see what the total for that is. Again, I apologize for the lines here, but that's $1,222,000 is what we're forecasting for next year, and for this year, we anticipate we're going to get $1,248,000, and the previous year, we had $1,309,000. That was our revenue. Now, we broke out forfeitures, from narcotics forfeitures, from revenue accounts, because you can't count on that. We don't know what we're going to get with that. We can have a history, we can look at it, but sometimes if you get a big arrest with a lot of items that we forfeit, it goes up. But this gives you a good idea for this year and last year, we're in the neighborhood of $121,000, $125,000. We're anticipating for next year, $120,000 in income from forfeiture funds. Cost reductions. We've eliminated 43 sworn and non-sworn positions from the Police Department. This is the big driver to show where our cost reduction was, because people cost. Just to give you a thumbnail view of that, we eliminated the three animal control officers from our animal control services. We eliminated our traffic safety unit. It was one sergeant and 10 traffic safety officers. We eliminated our juvenile unit, which was one sergeant, three school liaison officers, and one juvenile detective. We've made other eliminations throughout the department, and that's mainly by reducing personnel on ships, so we kind of spread the load throughout the rest of the Police Department. We reduce people that are actually working on the road on the ships. So, what that means is we have less officers out there at any particular time, because we just changed the number of people that are available. So, that's what we did through the reductions there. We also have made agreements to part-time positions in lieu of some of the full-time positions. We discussed in the past, the desk officer, it was through an agreement with the TPOA to help us save money. We eliminated having police officers on the front desk, and we went to retired, mainly retired Troy personnel that worked the front desk for us. There's been a substantial cost savings by us doing that. We estimate that's in the neighborhood of $800,000 a year by changing what we do with our desk officers and changing the hours that someone is sitting at the front desk. So, through technology changes, like having people be able to make crime reports on the internet, telephone crime reporting, or just having somebody call, come in, when someone else comes into the front desk to make a report, we've been able to save money that way. We also have part-time people doing our background investigations. There's a substantial saving there. We have part-time people available to us in communications and our dispatch section, part-time people available in records, clerical positions, and doing administrative support. So, some of those positions we eliminated, the work didn't go away. The work's still there, but we're using part-time people to help us get the work done. We also implemented a volunteer program, which we're very proud of, and it's taken off much better than what I ever anticipated. It's gone very well. We use volunteers in our investigations divisions to make callbacks to citizens if we're unable to get any action done on one of their complaints, or when we close a complaint. It's very, it takes a lot of time to get in touch with people, so we have a volunteer that calls, that manages that. So, we're doing customer service, letting people know, "We did all we could with your case. There's nothing else that could be done," and we give them guidance if they need to. We're very fortunate to have somebody who's very good at that, the volunteers. Most of you are familiar with our Citizens on Patrol Program, which is citizens who have been through, all of our citizens, all of our volunteers have been through... have been through our Citizens Police Academy, so we make sure we check them out that way before we bring them on board. The citizens on patrol, using their own vehicles, their own cellphones, they go out on a regular basis. They will drive around areas, either their neighborhoods or other areas where we're having problems, and be extra eyes and ears for us. We train them in how to do that. We're getting a lot of hours, which I report out regularly, and it's a very good program. It's going very well. The citizens like doing it. We get them training. We try to get them in quarterly for other training to help them learn more about how the police department runs and give them better ideas on some of the things going on in their community. What we're looking to do with that program is we want to make sure that we recognize, we had several of them, I think close to a dozen, that showed up and helped us on the Mike's homicide, that went up north with us, and we had to do, go out in cornfields and check for, unfortunately, I'm very familiar with the homicide, the man got murdered in the trial. We're waiting for adjudication on this. I don't want to get too much into it. We had to go look for the body. We had information that it was up north. We had it narrowed down to like a thirty-six square mile area. So you can imagine how difficult that was to start checking. But we had citizens from our volunteer program that went up there with us, and were trudging around the field, helping us look for that body. And ultimately, it worked out. We were able to find the body, so it all worked out good. It was very, very bad weather conditions. It was really good those people volunteered for that, so we'll make sure we recognize them. We also have volunteers that work in our records section, help us some of the filing, some of the items and records. Any questions on this one?
The two items on the left column, traffic safety unit and juvenile unit, can you give us some idea what impact that had on service? What can we not do now because we don't have each of those that we could have done?
The traffic safety unit, as you're all aware, because you've seen it with people that come up to the council podium and speak, traffic is our number one issue. It's one of the big drivers for complaints that we get. It's a major issue when it comes to neighborhoods and safety. It also has an impact on crime overall because if somebody is intended coming into your town to commit a crime, and your officers, studies show that if your officers are out making traffic stops, to where the bad guy sees a police officer on a traffic stop with the lights going, it makes them look for another community to go to. It helps harden the target of your community. So the traffic officers, having a dedicated unit, is we could dedicate them to problem areas, problem intersections, and we could assign them citizens' complaints to go work on. So some of the issues we've had with the school startup time and the buses, we have the traffic safety officers go work those problems. So we get the same officers that take possession of the problem and go out there and try to solve. Now, what we've had to do, the traffic safety unit is we don't have that luxury anymore, and the traffic safety officers were moved into normal patrol. So we try to get them out there to enforce the traffic laws, and you'll see later on in my report soon on where we're at with our stats for enforcement and that. Overall, the police officers have been doing a very good job in writing tickets and making arrests and keeping active. So the officers we have are doing a really good job for us. But we can't dedicate them like we used to. They're in the normal mix for calls for service, handling other calls, and they can't dedicate themselves to the traffic. Also, when it comes to the traffic safety, those are experts that we give special training to. And I'd like to have, can you discuss a little bit the extra training the traffic safety officer there?
Traffic safety officers are also heavily trained in accident investigation. It takes probably two to three years to get to all the schools to work yourself up to what you would be classified as basically an expert in accident reconstruction and investigation. Mostly for fatal accidents or very serious injury accidents where we need to do an in-depth analysis of what's going on. As you can see, like last year, I think we had six fatal crashes. Now, there are some years that are less, some are more, up and down, but you have to have people that are trained and can work their way through your problem to be able to present a case. We've done many in the past, and we're struggling to do so now because we've lost the amount of personnel and the training that's necessary to keep them qualified to do that. Another example of the loss of that is typically, everybody, like he already said, is normal. The biggest complaint we get is traffic. If you have a speeder in your subdivision, in the past, we would assign an officer to do what's called a directed enforcement, and we would monitor it, and we would spend time there, and we would try to solve the problem. Just two, three years ago, three years ago, say, we can do a hundred and fifty to two hundred directed enforcements in a given year in a subdivision or on a specific street. We did nineteen in two thousand and twelve. That we would actually be able to pull a number and spend the time to be able to do it with an assigned officer. That's a huge difference from what we were able to do before. It doesn't mean we don't still send an officer down your street to check on what they're saying. It means if he's there and something else comes up, he has to. And before, we would say, "You stay there and do four hours," or whatever. We just, we can't do that anymore. Those are two main issues by not having it anymore. We did create the Oakland County, South Oakland County Crash Investigation Team. So even though we have some less resources, we utilize Auburn Hills and Bluefield Township. If we need help, we call they come. If they need help, we go help them. So we are sharing resources, but we are still losing that ability to further our goal in that part of the process.
Regarding the juvenile unit, we'll get into that a little more in depth. Towards the end, I got a slide that just goes into the juvenile stuff. It gives kind of an overview on that. But juvenile officers have become specialty also. The nature of the juvenile law, how the investigation is done is a little more, it's more complex because it's different than how you deal with adults. So we've got some other data on juvenile, what we're looking for with the juvenile unit, but it has had an impact on our ability to do our jobs. You may recall, you may recall with the ICMA study standpoint, there was discussion about the traffic safety, that we get out and taking the, get out of business over doing accidents. You just have people come into the station, and they worry about getting rid of the cars off the roadway themselves. We didn't do that because that's a service level that I can't imagine doing to the citizens here in Troy. And it's just, it's what we do. You have to investigate accidents, find out the cause of the accident, so you're making, deploying your resources correctly to prevent further accidents. So traffic safety is a big deal in Troy.
Have you seen a spike in accidents? Has it been trending up a little bit because we aren't out there? Or is that something that you don't track at this point?
We track it. I haven't seen that. We had, last year, because of the bad weather, I think our accidents went up. So this year, we got that data, but I haven't looked at it from that standpoint.
I think common sense would just dictate that if you take officers away from directed patrol at specific areas where there are accident-causing intersections and so forth, that the accidents would probably go, probably go up.
Without, there's, we've been, Lieutenant Gordon went to some training, and we're looking into something that the state is proposing, and we start getting to, called data-driven, what's the rest of it?
Data-driven approach to crime and traffic safety.
And what that is, and I'll show you a map later, is it takes your high-traffic crash locations and your crime locations, and on a national study, they tend to overlap. So if you picture, say, around Christmas time, approaches to malls, we have more crashes. We also have more crime that occurs there because it's Christmas time, and people are going and stealing things. So that's just a real simplistic example, but you can extend that throughout the city, and we're seeing it when you look at our data and our GIS mapping. There's a correlation there. So we sent some officers off to train on that, and we're looking to get into that. It just takes manpower to be able to do those things. It's just, we're trying to leverage using the technology and the personnel we have to give the citizens the best bang for the buck. And I think we're doing a good job at it. It's just, there's only so much you can do. Is that your question, those two?
Yes, absolutely.
What's in this? Further cost reductions. Captain Redmond kind of stole some of my thunder on this stuff. We'll go through it anyways. Consolidated training. We've gotten very active with the Oakland County Tactical Team, which is called OCTAC. It actually stands for Oakland County Tactical Training Consortium. And what we're doing there is we're looking at using other people's resources and our resources to look at a countywide basis for how to respond to things like active shooters and civil disorder and that. So we're spreading the load among each other. And what Troy's been able to do is we've taken a leadership position with a couple of other key departments, and we're getting the equipment through grants that allows us to do this. I anticipated a future time, I'm going to come in and I'll show you all the different equipment and all the different training we've been able to offer, and able to leverage by doing this. But it is amazing the amount of money that the federal government is willing to do if you're willing to step up and show that you'll do this. And the active shooter in our community, issues and concerns about active shooter have come to the forefront, and I want to make sure as a police department that we're responded, that we're responding well and well-trained with that. I'm very comfortable with where we're at now. With those kind of things, you can always do better. So we're trying to get beyond being comfortable to be in the top. For years, we've had somebody involved in the police department and the fire department with Oakland County Hazard Materials Response Team. That's just another idea of consolidated training. And at our training facility, we exchange use of our facility by trainers for free slots, for free training slots for our personnel and that. And by doing that, we're able to leverage, letting them use the building to get our people trained. And what that does is it saves us money in our training budget. And Lieutenant Gordon, you had a number, how many people we've sent through that?
Around thirty, and it saved us a little over eleven thousand dollars in tuition last year.
So that was for last year. So thirty-three training sessions. Consolidated coordinated services. I've mentioned previously, so I'll keep this brief. Our special investigations unit used to have one sergeant and four Troy police officers in it. So that's five Troy Police Department personnel. We started having the budget cuts. We started a while back trying to get other agencies involved with it. When we had the budget cuts, what we did is we took two of the Troy officers from there, remember, it said we downsized across the board. So we downsized our special investigations unit. Auburn Hills gave us a police officer to put in there, and Bluefield Township did. So we're able to maintain five sworn police officers in there, four police officers and a sergeant, and we're able to increase our footprint with the information we get from the law enforcement agencies. And they have been doing a very, very good job of going out and arresting basically career felons and serial criminals. So they target serial thieves, serial people that break into homes, and they're doing a very, very good job with that. And I think it's a great service for the citizens of Troy that you don't see other law enforcement agencies do around us. There's only a few departments that do that. We're one few, and we do a really good job at it. It helps us with our crime rate. Major case assistance team. Captain Fry, do you like to give a brief overview of the major case assistance team, please?
The major case assistance team actually came about a number of years ago when we were dealing with one of the homicides that we had. I remember that Mayor Slater was involved in his captain investigations at the time. And it looked, and we were executing three simultaneous search warrants in three different jurisdictions. And the number of resources that were dedicated towards that, I thought, how can some of these other departments do that? So that actually gave us an idea that we started to explore a little bit, and we formed this major case assistance team with a number of other jurisdictions in the area. Basically, what it is, it's kind of an insurance policy force for any type of major case. And what it allows us to do is each one of the members from these other jurisdictions contribute one or more investigators to any type of major case that you have. And this criteria basically involves homicide, kidnapping, a number of other cases. What it's allowed us to do is it reduces the amount of overtime expenditures that we have in order to properly address those types of incidents.
Thank you. Captain Redmond already addressed the South Oakland County Crash Investigation Team. So what that does is allows us, when we have an incident, say, on I-75, rather than close down the freeway for an extended period of time while we're waiting and calling our officers in on overtime, we're able to call officers from other jurisdictions who are working, including Troy officers. We can get up there, we can do the investigation, get the people out to the hospital, get all the measurements we need, get the vehicles off the roadway in a more timely fashion, and do a very good investigation. Major crash investigations are very complex, lengthy processes to do. While we have many, many, very good police officers, to take someone who doesn't do it on a regular basis or isn't highly trained in it and have them do it is just not very practical, costly, because you're taking somebody that doesn't do it and having them do a very complex investigation. So it would get done, but it would take a long, long time. So this is a very good program we're involved with, the SACHET. And I mentioned the Oakland County Tactical Training Consortium, I think I've given enough on that. What's important is when you look at all these, is when we were faced with budget cuts and we knew what was going on, what I want to emphasize here is that Troy and many of the other agencies that we partner with on a routine basis, we have professional relationships with, didn't just roll up and say, "We can't do that anymore." We started looking at other ways of doing business to make sure we're still providing the quality service that we know people want. And that's what we're doing. We didn't just say, "Sorry, we can't do a good job when one of your loved ones was crashed, or we're sorry somebody got kidnapped, or we had this major event happen. We can't investigate where we can't do that." We had to come up with alternative ways of doing it. I'm very proud that we were able to come up with these different ways. We've constantly adjusted our shifts to accommodate leave time, reduce staffing, and minimize overtime. This is a little double-edged sword. I've told you that we've had reductions in our staffing and our personnel. I do not want to give out in a public meeting what our staffing levels are, how many police officers we have on at any given time. That would be counterproductive. So I hope that makes sense to everybody. We consolidated dispatch and lockup services with the Clougham Police Department. That's a revenue generator. I've already discussed that. There's many other things we've done for cost reductions. As Mr. Kishnik and I were discussing when we did this earlier today, this is the time period when I would get into saying, "We're still chasing rabbits. We're not just shooting elephants."
I didn't say that, by the way. That's his laugh.
This gives an overview of what we've done to reduce our overtime, which is again another cost. See, our high point, correlating with our high point in staffing, was these years in here where we were up in the neighborhood of forty thousand hours a year in overtime. We've had a reduction in personnel, and we've reduced the way we do things when it comes to paying people overtime. Many of the big drivers are court overtime. We've worked very closely with our court. We've reduced the amount of exams, preliminary examinations that we go to. We have pre-exam conferences. We work with our city attorney's office, and we make sure that we don't have police officers show up unless they're needed. So what that does, when you leverage that with reducing the replacement overtime, reducing minimums on our shift, reducing replacing people if someone else calls in sick and getting by what we need to get by, we've reduced the overtime into the neighborhood of below twenty thousand hours a year. We're about eighteen thousand hours a year. That's a significant cost savings, a significant reduction. We were discussing earlier, the six million dollar that went back into the budget there. That's it right there. Mr. Gerling pointed out, Mr. Miller's pointing out, that's where that's at. What happened is, is you see back in fiscal year seven and eight, we came in under budget. We came in under budget eight and nine, nine and ten, and then when we started attrition of personnel without replacing them, that's when we started having the significant changes. So what this is, is these were budgeted positions that accepted, you talked about it at your last meeting, and I don't need to go over it again, they accepted buyouts and early retirement programs, and it wasn't anticipated, so we had more personnel leave. These significant savings that goes into that. You've discussed it very much at your other meeting, and I don't think I need to get into it anymore. It's very obvious at this point. So that shows you where that is. We're anticipating for this budget year, we should come in around a million dollars under budget. So even though we've reduced all our personnel that much, we're still short personnel, so we're going to come in under budget, as Mr. Kishnik explained at the previous meeting. Now, capital budget, that is a mixture of forfeiture and general funds. So it's a little awkward when you're talking forfeiture money, and the forfeiture money, if you don't use it, it goes back into the forfeiture fund. It's a little bit awkward to explain that from being in an under-budget perspective. So we have the budget listed here. You can see, as the times got tough, we started reducing the capital items that we were purchasing. Any questions on that? Police Department budget, eighty-five percent of the dollars that go into the Police Department are for people. We're in the people business. It takes people to do our job. We can leverage technology. We can have all the best equipment. We can do that. But you have to have people to go out there and handle runs, make arrests, take reports, police traffic accidents, and do all the things that we've already discussed. So it's a people business. The only way to significantly change our three-year budget, which is what we're looking at here, is to change our staffing levels. So if you want our budget to go up, increase our personnel. You want our budget to go down, you decrease our personnel. That's the way it is with the police department budget. Some of the pressures that we're facing, it is constant pressure to be looking at meeting our minimum staffing levels. We have to meet them. We've got to make sure we have a minimum on our officers on the road at any given time to be able to handle what we look at historically for how we staff. We staff by hour day and day of week. So we don't just say, I'll just use wrong numbers, say we got thirty police officers. We don't say, "Thirty police officers, three..." say thirty police officers, three shifts, ten officers a shift. That's simple math. No, what we do is we look at workload. We distribute the amount of personnel on any given shift and the day of week based upon the work that has historically happened during that day of the week and those hours. So, we do ten-hour shifts. We, when we were fully staffed, we had the luxury of being able to have four overlapping shifts. We've had to change that. We're down to three with a couple officers on our noon to ten shift, which is tough because noon to ten is our peak time period. But we've got to make sure we're staffing twenty-four-seven operation. We look at our workload. We look at what's there. The easiest thing to illustrate that is when you look in the city of Troy historically, in the winter, from the hours of like five AM to six AM, you could get by with one and a half police officers from that one, one-hour period, because there's nothing happening because people are cold in bed. Everybody knows that, right? You drive around, there's nothing going on during that one-hour time period. But when it does happen, when something goes on, you need more than one and a half cops. You have to have a minimum number of police officers. So, we staff to that level. But we also staff to the level on our noon to ten, on the time period from noon to ten PM where we have overlapping shifts, because during that time period is when we have our peak calls for service. We've done that traditionally. I would be honored to say I'm the one that thought of that, but that was in place when I came to Troy PD. And we've taken what's been, been around forever, and we keep modifying it to make it better. It's a great program. When other agencies look at it, they can't believe it works, but it works very well in Troy. It's very unique. And a lot of that has, has to do with, with our distribution of workload, which comes from our malls and our calls for service. We've got the data. They'll be able to look at it very analytically. We're having pressure on the loss of our traffic safety unit and our juvenile unit. Those are impacting us and are impacting our ability to do our job. We're very concerned about that. We know that the citizens of this town, the city council, and the business community are very, very happy with having the safest city ranking. They like that. I hear it regularly. Get reporters talking about it. It's a big deal. We also know and we're concerned about being able to keep up our quality service level. If we don't have people, we can't keep doing what we always did. It takes people to do that. And if you're handling calls for service and you're busy on runs, you can't be doing the other stuff. Those are pressures that we're facing. Some of the concerns we have, the Somerset Collection wants dedicated officer. I've been talking to the Somerset Collection. They, before the mall season started, started talking about getting a dedicated police officer or two, that their job, that officer's job would be to come in and get, go to roll call, and then go work at the Somerset Collection for ten hours. Basically, I won't bore you with all the ins and outs of it, but we're at a point now where it looks like we're going to have a, we will have a operating agreement. The city attorney's office is working on that for us. We'll have a legal agreement with the Somerset Collection to provide a police officer there four days a week, ten hours a day, and then do what's called backfill. So, if that officer takes off, they'll be replaced by somebody at an overtime rate. So, what we're trying to do is do that impact. And the only way that we can see to do that is to increase our staffing level by one, because I don't want to provide them that service at the expense of all the other residents of Troy. So, this would be, if they want this extra officer, they're going to pay all the expenses that go on with having that extra police officer and the backfill overtime. So, we're well on our way towards getting an agreement worked out with them. It seems to be going very well. It's going to be a win-win, for lack of a better term, because they're going to get a regular officer that's there all the time, that knows the establishments, that they'll have a working relationship with, and will have an officer that's dedicated. They're also going to handle a lot of the calls for service. So, we think it's a very good thing. We have concerns that have been verbalized to me and other, other police officers and people in the police department, from the schools and the business community on the active shooter. This is going on, we've been working on this problem in Troy for at least ten years, where we were training our people on how to handle active shooters. We started, we were among the first ones to get the patrol rifles in the car, to train our people how to do it. We've got people out there that know how to do it, and we're working on it. As it's gotten worse, and the concern's gotten worse, and it seems to be an occurrence that happens a few times a year, there's people that are concerned about it. They're worried about the safety of their children, worried about their safety in the workplace. We've had an active shooter in Troy in one of our, one of our businesses on lawn, like that many of you know about. We had trained our police officers with that and how to respond to that, and we had equipped them. The equipment that we issue our police officers, every police officer now has gotten even better from them. Every officer has enough equipment that they should be able to go in and handle and start handling an active shooter. Again, that's one of those things, we don't want to detail in a public forum all of our actions and capabilities with that, but I'm very proud of the people that work here that have worked on handling that. Lieutenant Gordon is in charge of our tactical support team. He's done a lot of work on that when it comes in the areas of our schools, our business community and that. He's been very active with our OCTAP. So, I feel we're doing a good job in that, but I still have a concern about it and that's shared by the other people in the Police Department. We have a concern about our ability to attract and retain quality people. That came up at the last council meeting. From a citywide perspective, we're seeing that in the Police Department. We have a concern to make sure that we get the best and the brightest. We go through and we make sure that we have a very difficult hiring program. We give very, very strenuous and thorough background investigations to make sure we're getting the best people. And at this point, it's getting a lot more difficult than what it used to be. In the time period that I've been doing backgrounds, it's getting a little more difficult right now.
You've had some issues with trying to hire people over the last several months, I understand. Can you kind of come and share some of those, because it's kind of scary?
I tasked Lieutenant Gordon, when we recreated our, when we realigned the organization, Lieutenant Gordon works directly for me in administration. As you're all aware, he's, he's handling our ICMA report stuff, and he's also dealing with the hiring process all the time. Could you kind of illuminate on that?
I can maybe give counsel a little bit of history. I'm currently assigned to professional standards, as the chief said, and one of my jobs is to go ahead and begin the testing process, the background houses process, and basically get all of our new police officer hires up to speed so they can enter the field training officer program. I had this same job with Troy PD in two thousand two. I was assigned with administration from two thousand two to two thousand five. And I can tell you during that time, we never had a situation where Troy PD was referred to or was in the same mix as just another employer. And I attribute that to a number of things. I think our new police officer candidates are much more savvy as far as finding out benefit, pay, furlough time, concessionary time, defined benefit contributor, defined benefit pension versus a defined contribution, and they're being much more picky. And with some of the financial issues that the Police Department's had, with the downsizing we've had, I fear that, that the direction we've, we've gone in the last few years has been used against us.
So, they've gone to different, you've had people go to different departments, much to the surprise of everybody, I guess?
Correct. We've had a couple of shockers here just in the last couple of weeks. And we deal with background investigations as personal personnel matters, so we're not going to get into specifics. But I can tell you that in two thousand two, when I was in this position for the first time, it was not uncommon for a job candidate to have two or three job offers, and they would wait for Troy to make our offer. And now, I believe part of it, getting the job market is so dried up with law enforcement, because so many municipalities are having budget problems. A lot of these young officers right out of the academy or right out of college are just taking the first job offer to them, and we're really having a hard time competing with it.
We've had a couple, and as Lieutenant Gordon alluded to, we've had several that have gone to agencies that in the past, they wouldn't have gone to. A lot of smaller departments, we had the ability in the past where we could offer a wide variety of assignments that a police officer would want to do, so they would come here rather than go somewhere else. Out of, out of the five police officers that are here, Tom came from Bloomfield Township to come to Troy. Lieutenant Stout came from Birmingham to come to Troy. Captain Fry came from White Lake Township to come to Troy, and I came from Rose Point Farms to come to Troy. Lieutenant Redmond came from the Marine Corps to come to Troy, so I won't hold that answer. Captain Redmond. The theme there is, is we were, for lack of a better term, a destination employer, where police officers would look around and see places that they wanted to work and wanted to do a career, and Troy was the place they would go. It is, we're looking at this list where it is now, and we're kind of in a position of being another employer. We weren't like that before.
That's very good.
Retaining quality people, we lost a lot of people through the early retirement center program. Lost a lot of quality people. What we've done is we haven't replaced a lot of those positions. So, I, I give all these guys the opportunity to do more work, and they're always very grateful for that. Because I don't have as many captains and lieutenants as we used to have, so we're all getting the work done. Another concern is retaining that safest city ranking. We really want to try to do that. We know people are proud of that. We want to do the best we can to keep among the safest city. That's a community expectation. It's tied into the service we deliver. It's definitely tied into the crime rate and where the crime numbers are. And we see the safest city also as being a traffic safety and doing enough policing in the neighborhoods. I know I'm going.
Ten minutes over.
That's a good question.
We're holding him up.
We have, we have to decide if we're going to be a reactive or a proactive police department. What we're moving into now is we're a reactive police department. When we were a proactive police department, we were able to see problems on the horizon and throw resources at it and start handling it. As a reactive police department, we're doing calls for service. We're keeping our officers busy on that stuff. We're not putting officers in the school like we used to. We're doing a good job, but we're not doing the same job we used to do in the past. We're trying to leverage technology to help us with that. We're trying to leverage partnerships to do that. So, we're not just sitting back and saying, "Hey, we don't do that anymore." But we got, if we continue down this road, we're going to become more and more of a reactive police department. Our retail, educational, business, and residential communities, they demand personalized service. That's where we've been in Troy. That's what people expect. We want to make sure we're attracting, retaining quality people. We discussed that. There's issues with that, our contracts, furlough, and staffing level. We want to do what we can to retain our safest cities. Our future needs, our future needs that we see are boots in the ground. Any additional people we get, any new people that we get, what we're looking at is not increasing our inside people. We're looking at increasing the operational people, the people at the lowest level of the organization that provide service. We're not going to go back and increase, which is I'd like to. I don't see that happening. We're not going to increase our command officer levels. We're not going to be able to reduce the workload of these guys. We're going to put people on the road and operate operational positions. That's what we're looking for. People that are going to do the, the work, that are writing down their delivery service. One of the ways to look at that is the furlough time. I wanted to illustrate the impact of furlough time on the organization. What, over here by employee group, these are broken down by associations. So, the TPOA's police officers, you see what the authorized strength is, is seventy-four. Through furlough time, they have fifty hours per position, so that totals out thirty-seven hundred hours. If the furlough time was not existent, we would increase one point seven eight people based on an average work year of two thousand eighty hours. So, you take forty times fifty-two, two thousand eighty hours that somebody works. So, we would increase staffing by one point seven eight by eliminating furlough time. You see with the Command Officer Association, lieutenants and sergeants, you follow the math across, that's point six. Captains, they had a different rate. They were offered the opportunity to offer even more furlough time. So, there's a staffing gain if they don't take furlough time. Exempt, classified, that's, I'm in the exempt group, classified as some of our civilians. MAP and TC, MAP is our lockup and communications personnel, and TCSA is our communication supervisors. Now, you'll note with them, they have no furlough time. The reason they have no furlough time is when we were negotiating the contracts with them, we couldn't give them furlough time because we don't have any extra personnel in those positions. Any furlough time that was given to them would create overtime. So, the whole intent of having furlough time is to save money. So, if we would have given them furlough time, it would have cost money because we'd have to replace them at an overtime. That's a very simplistic explanation, but I think everybody gets that. So, that brings up all kinds of other issues that we're going to have internally, but these are what we're talking about for furlough time. We'll have an overall staffing gain of three people based on what we have for furlough time. Well, that's math. Everybody got that one?
Mm-hmm.
The other issue, and this will not result in an increase in any personnel, is concessionary time. Because concessionary time is time that people are not paid for that they work. So, it's either overtime or other time that they give back, so they're not being paid for that. When we were trying to illustrate this point with the furlough time, the concessionary time has to be on there to give you a good understand, full understanding of the whole length of the issue, the whole length and breadth of the issue. Because in MAP and TCSA that I talked about previously, you could see they've got hours per position that they're giving back, that, that they're not getting paid for, that they work. So, you can see the reduction, I'm sorry, not the reduction, but the total hours that are affected and impacted with that. The difference between TPOA and TCOA was the TCOA had a change in order to save money in their health care. So, that the savings that was, that we negotiated with them was health care. With TPOA, they went for the concessionary time. This is an overview. It's not meant to be all that detailed. Did I give enough?
I guess for, for the public and the members of council that weren't here when the concessionary program was initiated, ten percent concessionary, and I know Mr. Kishnik wasn't here at that time too, but this, this was part of the concessionary package of ten percent back two years or so ago. I know Council, Councilmember McGinnis and Mayor Pro-Tom Fleming and myself were part of, of getting that ten percent. What part, what percentage do you know of that concessionary ten percent to disinclude? Is, is it possible to know what that is?
It would be...
One percent?
When you take the total package here, when you look at the, let's look at TPOA, for example, the bulk of their time between concessionary and furlough time makes the ten percent. With, with...
Okay.
With TCOA, the difference in there is you're looking at the furlough time, and then there was a change in their health care that helped reach the ten percent.
Fifty-fifty?
We think that's about fifty-fifty.
So, each, each was, each is different because we gave the leeway to all bargaining units to come to the ten percent the way that they chose to do it basically, because we knew some had to do it one way like MAP, that TCOA had to do it another way because of some of their people. And then exempt was completely different. So, this was part of the concessionary package that we asked each and every employee to do to help us get over the hump of what we knew was going to be a difficult time period for the last three years.
Yes. It's, it's a very good way of putting it. The, the different groups, many of you recall the Police Officers Association, Command Officers Association did not need to open their contract. They had a contract in place, but we came to them and asked them to open the contract to get these concessions to help us work with this, the budget shortfall. And they opened their contract. Pretty much, I think, every group did that. TCSA, based on my recollection, was in, the communication supervisors were in negotiations at the time. So, they did not have a contract. But everyone else, pretty much from this group, opened their contract and did this. And then each group was a little bit different as to what their needs were. I think that's best illustrated by the issue with MAP. You know, we're dealing with them. From their standpoint, they would take furlough time, you know, all things being equal, got to make the best of bad decision. They were looking at the furlough time that the other units took. We couldn't give that to them, because it would cost us money, which defeats the whole purpose of doing it. So, it was a bitter pill to swallow, but just like everyone else in our, in, in Troy and in, in America, everyone, everyone took a hit.
Yeah. DPW, I might just thinking, I think they took cash, is my recollection. So, they decided to do it differently, I think, some of, some of them. But I guess the point I'm trying to make is that three years ago, when we asked the, all the employees to help us get over this potential problem that we were going to have for the next three years or so, this is what they did on their part to get us over the edge and, or the hump. And now we are where we are today. And now we have to reevaluate decisions that we made three years ago.
I was asked to discuss future needs. What I'm attempting to do here is just illustrate some of the things that we're looking at. You may recall, through the ICMA, there was discussion on sixty-fourty percentage and what... what, in a nutshell, what that means is, the average patrol officer should be busy sixty percent of the time, and have forty percent of their time open for patrol. That's very simplistic, that in and of itself, there's been countless studies and papers and a lot written on that, so I'm just giving you a very simplistic view on that. So, what we did is we looked at our police department, we picked two months out of every year, we picked a month in our winter bump, where things tend to be slower, and we picked a month, a month in our summer bump. Now, since we are police officers, we use something really simple, we use snowflakes for winter and sun for summer. So, in February of ten, for example, the average police officer during that month was busy fifty-four point eight percent of the time. As we started our staffing reduction, what you're seeing is their busy is increasing. So, February of 2012, that was up about six percent to sixty point three percent of the time they were busy. When you look at August of 2010, the police officer, average police officer was busy fifty-six point five percent of the time. On our latest one, August of twelve, they're busy sixty-four point three percent of the time, so you got about an eight percent increase. So, along with other data, which you're going to see soon when we do the crime stats, the annual crime stats for last year, our police officers are busier, not only are they busier, but they're more productive, their productivity's going up, if you measure productivity by some of the standard productivity measures, which are arrests and tickets, they're making more arrests, they're writing more tickets than they were, and they're busier, and they're doing a lot more font and patrol activity, which are the quality type activities that we want police officers to do. They're going out, and they're making traffic stops, they're finding suspicious vehicles and persons, they're getting narcotics off the street, our increase in firearms related arrests have gone up, drunk driving arrests are holding their own and going up, so the officers are out there, the officers, even though we've reduced the number of police officers, they're making more arrests and they're being very productive. Now, you may recall from the ICMA report, when they discussed the sixty-fourty, it was clearly articulated that once you start getting above sixty percent, you're going to start, it's going to be counterproductive, so your officers are busy, but they're going to reach a point where they're too busy. And if they're too busy, they stop doing font and patrol activity because they're waiting for the next run, or they know there's another run pending. So that's our job as police management, to kind of get that balance in there, and we're doing what we can with it. But there's this point where we're going to have too busy, we refer to it, and there's been studies that call it the nine-one-one mentality. What that means is you just wait for the next person to call in nine-one-one, and you take the call. You're not giving quality service, which is what we pride ourselves on, because you're too busy just handling calls for service. So we don't want to get to that point. We discussed quite a bit, but this illustrates a point that Captain Redmond mentioned, at our high point for traffic safety selective enforcements, we had a hundred and fifty-three selective enforcements. Last year we had nineteen, I mean, that illustrates the drop in our traffic safety unit, that's the best illustration I can give on that. We're leveraging technology, we're using that more, one of the positions, we took a vacated position, and we changed it into a crime data analyst, that person works for Lieutenant Gordon, and what his job is, is to take the existing data we have, use GIS mapping systems, get the information out to the police officers and our volunteers on patrol in a format that's easy for them to discern and understand. What this illustrates is this is called hotspot mapping, which just takes your areas where you'll have a lot more activity, in this, we're looking at traffic crashes, and it shows where your traffic crashes occur. There's a particular time period, which doesn't really matter, I'm just trying to illustrate the point here. So what this is showing is the area along Big Beaver and I-75, and down by fourteen John R., there's an increase in traffic crashes. If you took, as I mentioned previously, our crime data for the same time period, and you overlapped it here, it's going to be very, very similar. So crime and traffic crashes tend to occur in the same locations. What you think about it isn't that complex, that's where the people are, so that's why things are going on there. This is another method of illustrating through the geographic information systems, this is just using the, it's a high-tech pin map, and showing where the crimes are occurring at these peak locations. So we're using technology to help illustrate and help get the point across with police officers and citizens. A lot of this we're doing on our Facebook page, we put maps on that, on iTunes, we're trying to use that technology to help us out too. Want to illustrate some of the issues we're having with our juvenile investigations. In calendar year twelve, investigations personnel, so we no longer have a juvenile unit, investigations personnel investigated a hundred and ten incidents in which juveniles were either complainants or victims. Hundred and ninety-eight investigations involved juvenile defendants, so those are arrests. We had seven investigations involving allegations of child abuse, which are extremely intense, lengthy, and complex investigations, you can't just have them come in the station and do it, we have, can I try to top off the carehouse and some of the other, yourself?
As the chief mentioned, seven investigations involving allegations of child abuse, eighteen investigations involving allegations of sexual abuse, because of the very nature of juveniles, and you're dealing with somebody, we don't want to traumatize them any more than they've already been traumatized. As a result, we have protocols established in Oakland County, where even as far as interviewing them to try to determine what happened, we try to do it just once, if at all possible. You don't want to have to have them go through the same ordeal over and over and over again. So those types of investigations involve carehouse interviews, where basically we get all of the interested parties, which would be the police department, the prosecutor's office, somebody from protective, child protective services, maybe even a social worker, all at the same time, and they're all on, they're one person doing the interview, but they're doing it on behalf of everybody else. What oftentimes happens, and the reason investigations are so involved, is because of what you're dealing with, and then further down the road, you're under the problems of court anyhow. And it's not because of the credibility of the individual, but oftentimes the victim can't adequately express what actually happened to her. So these are time-consuming investigations, I have to be honest with you, for like, the vast majority of our pornosexual conduct, that you'll see in any of the statistics involved juveniles, vast majority of those were unsuccessful in prosecution, just because of all the complications, but that doesn't mean we don't investigate them, so we still dedicate the resources to those, and we're still going to do what we're going to do, even in the hopes of prosecuting one person. Also, what is noted is, the facts kind of speak for themselves, we're on a child pornography, six investigations involving allegations of child neglect, one homicide investigation involving the death of a three-month-old infant, that investigation's still figuring through
We currently have two, we get two investigators who worked in the juvenile unit, and when we had our downsides, then we rolled them into general investigations, so they get general investigations, cases and that too. I'm not sure how much longer that will go on, we try to give them these cases, but it's a little difficult, because they're handling all the other cases. I mentioned the dedicated officer for the Somerset collection, I'm discussing with Mr. Kishnik and Mr. Darling today. This looks like what I would refer to in technical terms as a wash, there's money in and there's money out, so unless, unless we're told not to do it, we're anticipating putting this in our budget, because we're going to get the money, we'll make sure that the citizens don't suffer any loss from this, as long as we get the legal, a legal thing, which I don't anticipate, but I'll do it, so we're going to go through the budget process. That concludes a period lengthy presentation, I apologize. Mr. Kishnik, guys, some conversations?
Well, I guess are there any questions first, sort of general questions specific for the chief, for any of the team here?
Chief, I like the way you tracked the hotspots and so forth, and see where Somerset's agreed to an officer, but one of the apparent hotspots is the Oakland Mall area, fourteen Mile area, has there been any discussions with that, the ownership of that mall about putting an officer there, them funding that?
We haven't specifically talked to them, feeling based on my previous conversations with, with the malls, they wouldn't be in a position to do that. We were discussing that today, and I think just to make sure we do, we're going to talk to them. We haven't yet, but we want.
Another question.
I love the success you're talking about with the citizens on patrol. Are those patrols primarily used within subdivisions, and I don't want to get any specifics, but is there a way that you could use citizens on patrol and train them to also work in some of these hotspots that are outside of a residential area?
They do both, and that's a good question. I guess to illustrate the point, many of you know Captain Sherwin, who retired from here, became the chief over at Mylan, he was relaying to me a story, that he was at the workout facility in the condo complex where he is, where he lives, and a citizen on patrol parked their citizen on patrol, which is their vehicle, we give them a metallic sticker they put on the side of it, parked their citizen on patrol vehicle, went inside and talked to the staff there to see if there's anything that they want to bring to the attention of the police department, or anything that that person could do for them. I couldn't ask for someone to do more than that, so they're out there doing that. What we're doing is, is we let the citizens on patrol patrol wherever they want, based upon their neighborhoods, we give them hotspots as to where we think they should go. What we've done in the past is when we had issues in parks and that, we let all of them know, they're arranged with some captains that work with them, and then they, they let them know what's going on, where we're going with the citizens on patrol, because frankly, the program took off so well, we never anticipated, is we got to kind of catch up to all these willing participants, is we want to utilize the crime data analyst position to provide data directly to them, and let them know where the hotspots are, give them suspect vehicles. Good example of that is, we recently have been having catalytic converter thefts, where thieves cut the catalytic converters off cars, you have to get the crime sheets here, or we've got suspect vehicles with that. We've taken, through Lieutenant Gordon, the crime data analyst, came up with some maps, showed what the hotspots were with these, showed the proximities to exit ramps and entrance ramps from freeways, and then provided them the most common time of occurrence, the most common day of occurrence, and the suspect vehicle information, and asked that they watch these locations, look out for it, and call the police department if they see it. So we're going in that direction and leveraging them to do that, we also, we have balanced out, there's citizens on patrol, so they could see something, if I don't have an officer to respond, they could see all they want, but we're just going to be able to go there unless we got police officers. But we're trying to leverage all this stuff. I think there was another question?
All right, question? I know that we were talking about recently the fact that we were looking to fill some positions, and I know there may or may not have been some specific feedback, I think at the time that we made the decisions that we needed to make to get the budget in line, we kind of did what was best for the city of Troy, and we weren't, I don't think anyone was really intending on hiring a bunch of people back, so we didn't spend as much time comparing to other communities at that point, it was really about doing the best thing we could for Troy in terms of budgeting and figuring out staff, a staff load that would be sustainable. But at this point now, when we are looking at trying to fill some of these positions, is there anything in particular that comes up that we're hearing is, is really out of line with the other departments? I know that there was some, you know, topic of, it's just an employer, or there are other places that people aren't willing to go, is there anything in, in specific detail that keeps coming up at this point that's really making our department stand out from other departments?
I'd like to turn the response out over to Lieutenant Gordon, who's dealing directly with all people.
As part of our background and our hiring process, we start with an orientation of each candidate, we've got four new candidates coming in tomorrow morning at nine o'clock as a matter of fact, and we pretty much go through the process top to bottom. We ask them before they fully commit to the process, is this something you want to do? And one of the most common questions we get is, you're starting a background, you may be offering me a job in the near future, is that job going to be there in a year? I've got young kids, I'm leaving an established department, I'm, we've had a handful of candidates that have actually been in neighboring jurisdictions that are on that, that layoff list, so they're kind of throwing a line out, and, and that's one of the very common things, is that the security of their job, they may have a job now, they may have a job in a year if something happens and we take a double dip with them.
Some may ask in regards to what our retirement program is, compare us others?
Correct, there are still a few agencies, a couple of them very close to us, that offer the defined benefit, the true pension program, that is, that is attractive to a number of the police officer candidates, and certainly, the concessionary time is not something that we can really sell our police department on, you get to come here and work and we don't pay you. So, there's, there's some questions about that, and also with some of the specialized units we've had to have be eliminated, it used to be that Troy was a true destination organization, and now we're kind of, kind of throwing the rest of them.
Did it answer? Go back to the Somerset collection just for a second. I was noticing around the table when you asked if we could put this in the budget, did anybody have any issues with that? I didn't see anybody say no, but, you know, I look at this kind of like how we used to replace with grants. If you hire and add onto the police department, what's to say two years from now that Somerset collection says we're not going to pay, pay for your officer anymore? Or three years from now, they're not going to pay? So, I would assume there'll be some language in a contract that talks about length of time, and I think the last thing we want to do is add personnel on, thinking that we're not going to have to pay for it, and then two years from now, we have to pay for it. So if you could just talk about?
Sure. In, in conversation with City Attorney's Office, and there's a bloom that's assigned Sue Lancaster to work in this, and I've worked with Ms. Lancaster on other contractual items that we have, we worked on our go-tag agreement in this, so very comfortable with how she deals with these. We've laid out to her what our expectations are, including that point of, we're looking at some minimum time period, like you say, it's three years, we're looking at, we have to see what Somerset's also comfortable with for outs. To me, we have to tie it directly into our budget, we have to make sure we have some language in it that would protect us if they decided to change their mind on something. Based upon the conversations that we've had with Somerset, Mr. Miller's had a conversation with management and ownership of Somerset, while it's good for us to plan for that, for the foreseeable future, Somerset wants to have a police officer, they're very, very adamant on that. Addressing the issue of, so we suddenly find ourselves in a position where they don't want it anymore, and we've got an extra person, we're looking into the future, I anticipate that Troy PD is going to be in a state of constant rotation, and we're always going to have somebody on the bubble to retire, and we're going to be in a constant mortifying, is where I look at it. When you look across our seniority list, we're lots of big group of people, and now we're getting into, into a phase now, where even though we're short people, we've got other people that are advising us out into 2013 that are going to be retiring. So even though we're short people, we've still got other people, so we're kind of where we were several years ago, where we're always short, we don't have, we're not, short's a bad term, we're never fully staffed, would be a better way of putting it. Through management and watching those, and being aware where we are in the hiring process, we can do a pretty good job, I'm not letting ourselves get ahead where we have too many people. So we're aware of that, I think we can manage that.
Yeah, I think that's, that's some comfort to, to budgeting three years out, and that's one of the good points of why you do that. So, I just thought I would bring forward that, you know, in many of the grants you get to, to add personnel to your department, those grants run out, and then eventually, you know, you are stuck with the cost of the grant, so, keeping in mind the three-year budget, it would be much easier for us to look forward on that. I did also want to bring up the fact, and I've said it publicly, and I know council members at the table have brought up the need to put officers back in the schools, and I think there is a consensus around this table to revisit that, and I don't know if this is the proper venue that the council may want Mr. Kishnik to take a look at that, and give us a cost, or how the schools, I've been proposing to meet with the schools, I think that would be a great reason to meet with the school board, and I think we just need to get that moving forward, myself, Council matees.
I guess, amen on what you said, and I think, I, I'm not an expert, and I'd like to see what expert advice would be, maybe a menu of options as far as three-year, you know, if you do X or Y or Z, I can, I can make a decision off a menu of options with, with insight from, from the police department, but I think that is one of the highest priorities, I think, for myself personally, so that's something I'd really like to see investigation of.
Yeah, and I don't know if this is the proper venue for that, but certainly, I think the council wants to see at, at the budget session, an opportunity to, to vote up and down on that issue, and it would be great if we could have some... about that, and we just need to partnership, partnership up with the schools, at least let them know that that's, that's important to this council, and I think it is important to this council from everyone that's spoken to me, so.
Well, Mayor, without presenting specifics at this point, that's, that's the reason we wanted to use this forum, so that we could put the budget together with the right priorities and not just, you know, as a group. So if I could, would you, would, as a takeaway from this meeting, it's, it sounds to me like the employee recruitment and retention is a, is a priority, the Somerset officer and the school officer are, are a priority that we talked about at least right now. So those, those three are, are the key. Somerset's kind of a, I don't want to say a priority, but it's a priority because it's going to happen, so we need to, we need to make sure we identify all the issues as you raised, but the school officers, officer or officers is certainly a priority, and then employee recruitment and retention. Would those be the takeaways? Would we have consensus that those are the takeaways as we prepare the, the budget for the upcoming fiscal year? Did everyone agree on that?
Yes.
So that, that would be a very helpful takeaway, so that when, that the five of them put their stuff together, we can, we know where everybody's going.
I just have one more thing that I think is important. After hearing that we're continuing to do background investigations to try and get officers to come here and fill our positions, I think it's important that the public and any potential officer here from this council, that we don't intend to lay off any police officers from this department moving forward. And we've done everything that we possibly can as a council for the last three years to make sure that we didn't have to lay one police officer off. And I think it's an important message that we need to get out there, that this council has no intention of, of laying off public safety officers. And if they think that, when they're coming here and asking our background investigators, I think it's important that he, he be able to tell them that we do not have any intention of doing that. And if I could get consensus on that.
Words are one thing, I mean, we've budgeted that way. I think that, I mean, that.
Budget's basic, I'm.
Budget speaks a lot more than any sort of verbal affirmation, but yeah, absolutely.
I think we went out of our way to make sure that we offered early retirement programs, and we did everything that we possibly can to make sure that we didn't lay off at the lowest level, which we consider the future of Detroit Police Department. So that's the theme that we used three years ago, and I don't, none of that has changed.
I also think it would be important, just under the umbrella of retaining and attracting quality employees, it would be helpful when we get into budget discussions and we're really looking at specific options, if the police department and the leadership in the police department could really pinpoint which one of those things that you kind of glossed on. Obviously, we talked about job security, but some of those other things are going to be most important in terms of attracting and retaining people to our department. So we've kind of talked about a couple of different options, and we see a couple of weaknesses based on the information today and the anecdotal information that we've been receiving, but I think it would be helpful to the council if, knowing that that's important to us, that the people that know the department best and know the surrounding departments and agencies that would be hiring can really look at what is most important to retaining and attracting, and then give us a plan based on that. Because I think, you know, that will really help us, we're not going to be able to do everything, we're not going to be able to get rid of furlough, add more people, get all the specialized units back. We all know that that's all not going to be possible to make, you know, the perfect dream job coming here to Troy, but I'm sure that you would be able to know the things that you really think are going to get the best people to stay here and come to the city of Troy. So when you present the budget to us, if there are some changes, let us know why you think, what you've decided to change or propose to us is absolutely the most important to reaching that goal, and I think that that's going to be helpful to us.
We will be able to work on that. A lot of that data is from what we refer to as hearsay, because there's not a lot of analytical evidence, because when you're, when you're dealing with somebody that's going to another organization, they want to be careful what they say, they don't want to say anything bad about a possible employer, and they don't, so Lieutenant Gordon has made calls back to be able to try to glean more information from him, and it's difficult. But we can work on that to try to give a better idea based on what you're saying. I just, we pride ourselves on being analytical and give a lot of data on that. This is an area where it's based on what we're hearing and what we're feeling. So cops and feelings don't go together very well.
Thank you.
Questions, comments? Thank you. I think that's a great way to start our meetings, and I think everybody likes to see each department come forward and educate us and the public. I think that's a great way to do it. I appreciate it. We have no closed session scheduled this evening, so we are adjourned. Thank you.